10 o'clock, so we are going to get started. Don't worry if you are in line signing in. There's lots of procedural stuff. First of all, can you hear me if I'm over here? Great. Well, this is something we didn't actually fully practice, I guess. Okay. All right. I'll be right over here. Anyway, we are a quorum of people, so the meeting is going to come to order. I'm your moderator, Phoebe Walker, and you elect me to make sure these meetings are run well and efficiently, and everyone is polite, and we get the business done. We have our own rules, our bylaws, and we also have this book, Town Meeting Time, in case we have any questions that answer the rules about how we can do things. Welcome to Mohawk and to the set, which you can't see behind us, of guys and dolls. I hear it was amazing last night, so come on back tonight and watch it. I remember when we ran, when I was a student here. So it's May 6, 2023. Our warrant shows it was properly served. Can someone shut that door? Ordina? We're going to start off with a bunch of orientation of what we're doing here today and what the materials are that you're holding. But very, let's see. Very first, we want to start with the dedication of the town report. Is he here? Oh, okay, well, we're going to have to wait one second. Nope. Hang on. The dedicator is about to be in the room. So much for my shutting the door. Okay, we'll keep going until he comes in. All right, so I wanted to say, make sure everyone knows that there's a bathroom by the front door, and my major, major thanks to Roger and Tony and Otis and David here for helping us with the equipment and, in particular, making sure that these horrible lights that were blinding us until just a few minutes ago were gotten rid of. So thank you. And now I'll turn it over to our select board member, Barry Del Castillo, to dedicate the town report. Come on down, Richard Warner.
Yes. The Town of Buckland Annual Report for 2022 is dedicated to Richard Warner. Richard Warner hung his shingle on Lower Street in 1992, shortly after returning from a year as a doctor in Ghana. Under his name, the sign declares, "No condition is permanent." His many loyal patients appreciate his sense of humor as much as they do his phone calls and check-in visits and his practical advice on how to handle a given health issue. In a world where most doctors spend no more than 10 minutes with each patient, Dr. Warner continues to dedicate whatever time is needed to ensure his patients are heard and feel well cared for. At Memorial Day parades in Children Falls, Rich is the guy on the penny-farthing bike with the impossibly high seat, wearing the period shirt and smiling ear to ear. His exploits on a bike are legendary, and including riding an entire day of a multi-day trip in Colorado with rocks in his packs and his friends working hard to control themselves as they added to his load at each red stress stop, and he never slowed his pace. His three boys share their father's adventuresome spirit, and he relishes spending time with them biking and skiing. As a member and longtime chair of the Board of Health for over 30 years, Rich helped implement state no-smoking regulations, new Title V, and regulations on the emissions of outdoor wood boilers. He is presently working to establish a clinic in Buckland so our area can continue to enjoy excellent compassionate health care when his shingle, in keeping with its message, is retired. Thank you, Dr. Warner, for your service to the citizens of Buckland and the entire area, and best wishes.
All right, thank you. New people coming in. There really is a lot of room down on this whole side of the house. Is this working for you guys, the sound? Is it okay? Okay. That's horrible for me. Okay. All right, that's fine. And thank you to our tellers for signing folks in and helping with accounting during the meeting. And thank you for the bake sale to the Mohawk Outdoor Advisory Committee. Now, you're all going to need a bunch of handouts, but mostly you're going to need this book. You guys who are in the booth, is there any way it couldn't, I could do something different where I wouldn't echo? Like, I can hear every word I say echoed back at me. Move back farther? Test, test? Still works for you guys? It's a little better for me. Okay, great. All right. We'll do that. Okay. So you need this blue book, right? It includes, and there's also a handout you got from the school, and there were various people also handing you handouts about other things as you came in. But the main tool we are using is this. So let's walk through it quickly because everything you need pretty much is in here. If you have a pen with you, one thing I would suggest is it doesn't have page numbers that go all the way through, but if you were to put them on there, it still makes a lot more sense to you. So the beginning of the book is just the rules that we have here for town meeting, moderator's message. Then there's a bunch of definitions. If this is an early town meeting of yours, those can be helpful. There's a glossary of the financial terms that we use when we're talking about town finances. You can come down here, there's lots of room on the other side, too, if you come down and go around. Then you're going to go to what looks like it says page five, but then the next page says page one. This is the very important Finance Committee memo that tells you what our Finance Committee thinks about each of the warrant articles and about our revenues and our expenses and our financial status. So flipping through there, you'll see on the fourth page of that, they begin actually weighing in and explaining each article that has a financial impact. So you'll find that helpful to look there. You can see their example of it and their description of it, and also whether they approved of it or not, right? Flipping through there, you'll get to the end of that seven pages, and there's an article, some descriptions about the Mohawk articles and the sources of revenue, and some descriptions of each of the articles we're going to be voting on that have to do with our relationship with the school district. Then, keep flipping. You'll see a nice little map of Buckland and Shelburne and a description of, sort of an overview of the police sharing services that we are going to be voting on today. There's more information coming about that, but this is the sort of one-pager about what we're being asked to decide to do as a community. Your next one says Buckland Revenue and Expense Analysis and shows you where, shows you sort of the overview of our financial status. Then turn the page and make a little fold in the top of the page because you're going to want this page again. This is technically page 18, and this is the budget by section. So, you know, the primary thing we are here to do every year is to decide how much money to spend on what kinds of things, right? And if you have a question about any of those things, this is where you're going to, this is where you're going to look at them and see whether you have any questions, okay? So keep going then. You then will come to a capital budget overview page. You have to turn it sort of to the side here to see what the different physical infrastructure improvement amounts are. Then, the next page is the wastewater treatment plant budget. And so it shows you what was spent in '22, what we spent in '23, what was requested in '24. Note that the wastewater treatment plant currently is in our consent agenda because nobody ever seems to have any questions about this budget, and we share it with only the other, the only people who pay for it are the users of that system on either side of the river. And so if you have questions about this budget, you're going to need to ask me to take that out of the consent agenda. Okay. Next, you're going to see something that says Budget Sources and Uses, and that just shows you where the money is proposed to come from for each thing we're spending money on at this meeting. And then you've got multiple pages about the police sharing proposal, mostly including the various cost scenarios of sharing police, not sharing police, how much it costs, how much it would cost compared to this year, how much it would cost if we didn't share the police. So there's five or six pages of that. I lied, seven or eight pages of that. And then finally, at the end, you see something that says Annual Town Meeting Warrant. So this is how we're going to move through the, this is the document we're moving through, right? This is our agenda for the day, and you can see right in it what it is that we are proposing to do here today. And the way town meeting works is, this is the only thing we can do here to do today. We can't do anything different than we've already warned people we're going to do on this warrant. So you're going to probably want to follow along there. Okay, that is your summary. Remember that you dog-eared, hopefully, the budget, so it's ready for later. Quick overview of our rules. If you want to talk, you need to come down to one of these two microphones and wait until I recognize you. When you have been recognized, you say your name and street that you live on every time. And we allow you to talk for 10 minutes, but we really, really hope you won't talk that long. And the, however, when we have like a special thing we're voting on, the people who are starting off that conversation by describing what it is, the committee that's hosting it or whatever, they get more than 10 minutes. Please be relevant to the article at hand. Please be polite. We don't allow anybody to speak three times until anyone else who wants to speak on something has already been, had a chance to speak. So make sure if you have a lot to say on a particular article, you are scheduling yourself appropriately. And please be patient with your neighbors. We're all at really different places in our understanding of the stuff we're here to discuss. Some of us just walked through the door, didn't do, read anything in advance, are looking at the blue book and trying to figure it out. Some of us have been digging into this for months. We all have the equal right here to be heard, and so don't be moving the question while someone's asking something that doesn't make sense to them. And let's see. We know, as of last year's town meeting vote, paper ballots now require a vote of the meeting and require a majority vote. So I just want to tell you that that's one thing that changed. Lots of room down here. You don't even have to sit right in front. You can just come around and go back around the other side if you want. Okay, we're almost there. So who is here with us today? At the far end, we have our Select Board, Larry Wells, Clint Phillips, and Barry Del Castillo. We have our Town Administrator, Heather Butler. We have our soon-to-be temporary Town Clerk, Elizabeth Saron. Over here, we have our Finance Committee, Larry Langford, Paula Consolo, and Bob Dean. Let's see. I want to actually explain what is going to happen. No, I'm going to do the Town Clerk thing in a minute. First off, stand up if you were on a board or committee this year in this town, so that we can thank you. Thank you very much. Are you on a board or committee? Okay. And stand up if this is your first town meeting in the Town of Buckland. Yay! Thank you so much for coming. We hope you'll come back. Then over here on this, what's my far right are, is a place for people to sit who are not registered voters. And there, people can be here for any number of reasons, but generally, they're here to answer a question we might have because they are part of the library, the Arms Library, or the Senior Center, or they're police officers who don't live in Buckland. So I would just like to ask your general approval, if we want to hear from people who are here to provide input into what we have to do, but they're not registered voters, may we hear from them? You can just say aye if you agree. Anyone opposed? What an open-minded group. Thank you. Okay, good. All right. Now, we are going to have the Finance Committee Chair, Larry, give us an overview of our finances, then. No, because I haven't, I can only, we can only do the Town Clerk. Let me just explain what's going on. Things are a little, little different than usual. Usually, you need a Town, you need a Town Clerk to run the town meeting. Our Town Clerk isn't available today. So we are going to do this sort of strange little parliamentary thing where, as soon as I open the meeting, we're going to ask for your permission to let Barry cast one vote on behalf of all of you to elect a temporary Town Clerk, Elizabeth. And then if that's okay with you, he'll do that. I'll swear her in real quick, and then we can get moving. But we, we, there's, there's, a Town Clerk is sort of a fundamental piece that we can't not have in place, and there's a way that you have to do it. But that's only happening once we open the meeting. Before we open the meeting, tell us about our finances, Larry.
I thought you'd never ask. Well, thank you, Madam Moderator.
We can't hear you.
I think I'm, this is, I'm going rogue.
But not with our money.
In your town meeting booklet, on the second first page, that's, that's called humor in Finance Committee terms, is a memorandum from the Finance Committee to you, the citizens of Buckland, which frankly, I recommend for insomniacs and auditors. So let me give you a thumbnail of the big issues that are really contained in that report. This has been a really unusual year for preparing a budget for FY24. In a lot of ways, the financial chickens have come home to roost, but they're like angry birds. Let me explain what I mean. Like so many towns in Western Mass, we came out of the pandemic only to be hit by the combination of higher costs of inflation and continued flat growth in revenues. That's an important point. Over the last several years, holding the line on property taxes, which are 88% of our town revenues, has meant relying on state aid and new growth to cover our expense increases. As you'll read in the memorandum, we've enjoyed a modest increase in new growth. But although there have been and continue to be efforts by our legislators to increase vitally needed state aid to rural towns like Buckland, it has not yet arrived, and prudently, we don't believe we can count on needed increase in the near term. Over the past several years, our relatively flat growth in revenues has meant holding the line on expense increases by limiting investments in personnel and our infrastructure. This has been a financial balancing act, one that's become increasingly more difficult each year. It's a balance that we've created principally through pushing back on requests for increases in funding town departments. This fiscal year, however, we've tipped out of balance. As you read in the memorandum, we're recommending an FY24 budget that provides necessary and overdue increases in town operations that are required for the provision of essential services. We believe this recommended budget is exceedingly fair and has taken into very careful consideration the difficult financial situation that many in the town find themselves in during these economic times. However, in making these recommendations, given the revenue constraints we face, we're presenting a budget for FY24 that contains a deficit of $151,262. Let me touch briefly on three areas of increased expenses. First, today you'll have a chance to discuss and vote on a change in Buckland's policing services, which will go up just under $116,000, or 53%, if you're tracking in the budget. In order to meet the requirements of police reform and more consistent coverage, we are recommending approval of a shared services model with the Town of Shelburne, one in which Buckland will be assessed a portion of the total two-town police cost, or $334,264. If this article does not pass, and our police force were to remain independent, we project the cost to Buckland would be about $30,000 higher than the proposed shared policing model and would provide less coverage. And we'll hear from Chief Bardwell a little later in the, in the meeting when we get to the topic. Second, the increase in the town's public works budget of $71,106, or 11 and 1/2%, reflects the costs of fully staffing the department and the increased costs of supplies and equipment. This department has been understaffed for many years, and the town has paid the price through less well-maintained roads and equipment. And if you're like me, you were really grateful for the snow plowing late this winter. Third, the increase in general government of $43,949, 7 and 1/2%, reflects the costs of building maintenance, an increase in the disposal of solid waste, a dramatic increase in cybersecurity insurance, an increase in recreation expenses with the reopening of the swimming pool, and an increase in salary expenses. The town has a good team in place, but in a tight competitive labor market, we must ensure that we can continue to attract and retain the best talent available. There's poaching going on out there. Let me discuss the override. By law, a community cannot operate at a deficit without voter approval. This is our situation today. If town meeting votes to spend more than the town can expect to collect in revenues, an override of the Massachusetts law that limits the growth in the town's tax levy, nicknamed Proposition 2 1/2, is required to cover that deficit. This situation presents any Massachusetts town in a situation like ours with a very difficult choice to make. On the one hand, shall it preserve important services provided by the town by approving a Proposition 2 1/2 override to cover the deficit? Or, on the other hand, shall it balance the budget by making dramatic cuts to town services? It's a tough choice. Buckland has not had to wrestle with this question of an override of Prop 2 1/2 since 2007. There's a section in the memorandum that explains how it works, but let me summarize the two-step process that we are launching today. Today, at this annual meeting, you'll have the opportunity to vote whether or not to pass the FY24 budget, which contains a deficit. If the town meeting approves this budget today, then a vote to pass the override of Prop 2 1/2 in order to fund the budget will go before the voters at the annual town election on June 6. If it's approved in June, the override will go into effect. If approved, the override of Prop 2 1/2, Proposition 2 1/2, for $151,262 to be applied to the deficit would have an impact on our FY24 property taxes. We can estimate the increase in the tax rate based on last year's numbers and looking at all the factors for this year, but it's a guess. We believe it may be an increase of about 55 cents per thousand dollars of value. It would be reasonable to ask the question, what would happen if we don't pass the budget today or don't pass the override on June 6? The answer is that in either case, the Finance Committee will go back to the drawing board and prepare a budget for FY24 that will be balanced by making cuts of $151,262 in town services. This budget would then be voted on at a special town meeting. So let me summarize. One, FY24 budget contains a deficit of $151,262. Two, Buckland's annual town meeting today will decide whether or not to pass this budget. If this budget is passed by town meeting, then Buckland voters on June 6 would decide whether or not to pass an override vote of, for $151,262 to be applied to the deficit and balance the budget. Finally, if in the end, the town votes not to pass an override, the Finance Committee will go back to the drawing board and develop a budget that will contain significant cuts to town services and personnel. And that's it. Thank you, and I'll pass it back to the moderator.
Thank you, and while that was not uplifting, it was very informative.
This is a beautiful day, the first nice day of the spring. We just coronated King Charles III, if you were watching.
Which Larry cares about.
And, you know, what the hell, what's he saying all this stuff for? I'm sorry, but I have to give it to you.
All right, I'm officially calling the meeting to order, and our first order of business is going to be that thing I just told you it was, which is the little deal with electing a temporary Town Clerk. Mr. Phillips? I would entertain a motion.
Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board Chair to submit a single ballot electing Elizabeth Saron as temporary Town Clerk for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting.
I second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Would you all raise your hand if you would allow the Select Board Chair to cast this ballot for you? Okay, you can put it down. Yeah, sorry, yeah, right. Always raise your card when I say raise your hand. All right, anyone opposed to that? Okay, that passes unanimously. I will accept your ballot, Mr.?
I have a ballot that reads, "Do you elect Elizabeth Saron to serve as temporary Town Clerk for this town meeting in Buckland on May 6, 2023?" I have filled in the circle next to the word yes.
We're told one vote can make a difference. Here we go.
Thank you. Please stand up. Do you, Elizabeth Saron, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as temporary Town Clerk for the Buckland Annual Town Meeting to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to sign this thing. And we're in business. Okay, there you go. Okay. So, I don't need that. Yeah, thanks. So again, this, as, as you've heard, we have a lot to discuss today, the police regionalization, the budget. And so the one thing we're going to do to try to make this move a little quicker is we're going to do a consent motion, right? We've done this a number of times over the years. We don't do it every time, so if anybody doesn't remember, or for our newer folks, this basically means that we take a whole bunch of stuff that has to come to town meeting every year and nobody ever has any questions about, and just pass them all at once together. So, however, this is your chance to say, no, no, I actually have a question about that one. So you can see, you're now, you should be at the back of your book where you're following along with the motions, right? That's those like last 15 pages or so. So the consent motion is going to be taking Articles 1, 8, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 17 out of order and passing them all as one. So I'm just going to tell you what those are, okay? It is one where you accept the reports of town officers. We vote on the Mohawk Trail Capital Assessment, the $90,000 of that, not the school budget, the tech school capital assessment of about $6,000, the operation and maintenance of the wastewater treatment facility, the wastewater treatment facility's capital costs, and more wastewater treatment capital costs. And then the town hall, town debt, the sort of paying our debt, and you can see a little table that shows you what that debt is. And then finally, the other thing in here is our contribution every year to our post-employment benefits liability trust fund that will help our retirees have their benefits after they retire. So those are the, those are the articles we were going to pass all as one. Is anybody here want to request that one of those come out because you wish to debate it individually? Okay, in that case, I will accept a motion on Article 1.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to take Articles 1, 8, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 17 out of order in this warrant and to approve all of them as one vote without debate on any such articles, and further that the motions for each article be incorporated into this consent motion as follows.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, are there any questions about any of these? Oh, no, without debate, never mind. All those in favor of, of this consent motion, please raise your card. Okay, you may put it down. All those opposed? Okay, the consent motion passes unanimously, and we are moving on. Article 2 is about the salaries of the elected officers you see before you hear.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $44,854 for elected officials' salaries for fiscal year 2024 as line item appropriations and as shown in the table below, which you have.
Second.
Okay, the article has been moved and seconded. Does anybody have any questions about this article before we vote on it? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand, card. Okay, thank you. All those opposed, please raise your card. Article passes unanimously, and we are moving on to the Police Services Budget.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $334,264 to fund the Police Services Budget. the sum of $334,264 to fund the police services budget shared for fiscal year 2024 as a line item appropriation.
Thank you. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. And would you like to speak to what we're doing here? I think Larry gave us a little overview, but...
The intermunicipal agreement that you have in your blue book is able to be implemented technically by state law by the two select boards, Buckland and Shelburne. Both select boards wanted town meetings to have the opportunity to review and approve this sharing proposal. This isn't a mechanism for you to do that. You are voting a single line item for our share of the Shelburne Police Department budget for fiscal year '24. Normally, in the future, if this passes, it will be included in the operating budget, but we wanted an opportunity for town meeting to address this issue separately.
Thank you, and I think probably if Chief Bardwell would like to come and talk a little bit, I imagine what would be helpful for people to hear is what say the voters of Buckland will have or the town of Buckland will have in the new. And remember to give your street address.
You know what? We'll just do this. Good morning, thank you, Madam Moderator. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Greg Bardwell, Wellington Street in Buckland, lifelong resident. I've been a police officer in Shelburne for the last 15 years, the police chief in Shelburne for the last five, and the police chief in Buckland since April of last year. As a resident of Buckland, I understand that these are some heavy topics and, you know, the financial impacts of them are going to affect us all, including myself. And if this was to come to fruition, about three-quarters of our department, all of whom live in Buckland as well. So that being said, I think for those of you who have made it to the town forums that we've done, we had a forum, two forums in Shelburne, one in Buckland. The premises of this, the whole reason of this is coming to fruition now is, in fact, the police reform bill that was passed in 20, I believe it's 2021, which is essentially eliminating the part-time police officer position throughout the Commonwealth. The topic of merging or regionalizing the two departments has been on the burner, I think. I know it's been a topic of conversation the last 15 years or, yeah, the last 15 years I've been a police officer and beforehand. And I think that, given the circumstances in Buckland and the circumstances in Shelburne, paired with the reform bill, we have to look at this realistically. The reason that I think we can all agree on, at least the Finance Committee and the board have backed this idea is because what the police reform bill does is it implements what's called POST, Peace Officer Standards Training. It's a standardized training across the Commonwealth. And I think that many police officers across Commonwealth believe that implementing POST is a, is a good thing, but it came with some cons, some cons that affect rural parts of the Commonwealth in addition to areas such as the Cape, where they rely heavily on part-time police officers for seasonal work.
Chief, can I just interrupt you for one second? I'm seeing a lot of people going ee because of this ringing. I wonder if you stepped also way back, away, as far back as you could, maybe it would get better?
Is that any better?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, no problem.
You were describing the peace officer.
Yeah, so the POST, Peace Officer Standards and Training. The reason that essentially a part-time police officer doesn't exist anymore because prior to the reform bill, a police officer that wanted to work part-time could go to a part-time academy and then come work their shift or two a month for the municipality with essentially the same training as a full-time officer. What I mean by essentially is that they're still held to the mandatory training that a full-time officer has to do each year, but they never went through a six-month paramilitary, you know, Monday through Friday, full-time academy. What POST did in the reform bill is essentially said, we want every officer across the Commonwealth at one standard, which we as a department in Buckland and we as a department in Shelburne agreed that that makes a tremendous amount of sense, that we should all be on the same page. But what that did is it essentially states that once the department needs a part-time officer, we have to rely on finding somebody that wants to work, that wants to put themselves through that full-time academy, which is six months, Monday through Friday. And then after that, there's, prior to that, there's a psychological, you know, health stuff. It's an 18-month process to get a normal citizen off the streets through academy, through training, through background checks, psychological backgrounds, so forth and so on, and get them on the road. Once, once they're all the way through that, they're a certified police officer in the Commonwealth. So in theory, they can work anywhere throughout the Commonwealth as a full-time officer if they so choose. So we'd be asking for somebody to go through that process and then come work a month or two, you know, or, excuse me, a shift or two a month in Buckland and Shelburne. So Buckland is not the only municipality dealing with this. Shelburne is obviously, and in Shelburne, although they did pass, pass the idea of this on Tuesday of this week, the budget was going to skyrocket over there if it was not to because without the part-time officers, you're just not going to get policing services. You won't get the coverage. The alternative is, that wasn't spoken about prior, is you've got a shared policing service where the department would be, the shared department would be made up of six full-time officers and the handful of part-time officers that we have until those part-time officers age out or just decide to not work anymore. Those officers would cover the shifts for both towns completely, which is, which is completely different than what's going on right now. You'd get consistency in coverage and there'd be a strain of professionalism across the board for both sides of the bridge. So, you know.
I think the other thing I was, I was just suggesting is, can you describe the governing body that will give input?
Sure.
Or I can just tell people to look at this page.
Yeah, are you speaking to the committee?
The Advisory Committee.
All right. So the advisory, part of the shared policing services agreement, that is if this was to come to fruition, one thing to understand is that the police department is going to be the Shelburne Police Department. It's going to be the Shelburne Police Department providing policing services for the town of Buckland. So really, the end-all decisions that are made for the department and how the department operates would be made by Shelburne. But within the intermunicipal agreement, there is a policing, a shared policing advisory committee. That committee is going to be made up of myself, a select board member from each town, most likely an administrator, the administrator from each town, I forget how it's worded, but also civilians from each, each side of the bridge. One more than in Buckland than there would be in Shelburne, giving, given the fact that what we're discussing here is essentially Buckland relinquishing its power to have their own police department. That being said, that Oversight Committee would meet with myself once a month. I'd be providing them not only, you know, financial updates, but department updates as well to include, you know, grant, grants that we're applying for, operations, statistical data on calls and so forth and so on. So it's going to be a much more involved police department, and I would have to say for both sides of the bridge, and I agree too, a much more transparent police department.
Thank you, thanks. Why don't you stay here in case people have questions? Oh, and I want to recognize our state rep. Hi, Natalie Blay, thanks for joining us. Thanks for all you're doing for our town. Did you have a question, Ms. Dukes?
Of course I have a question.
Well, then come on down to the microphone over here, please. Either one, you guys can share the mic if you want. It'll be like a band.
Cheryl Dukes, Sears Street. He's my across-street neighbor. Full disclosure. So my question is, in relation to Buckland doing a really good job of having capital accounts for saving for cruisers and all the rest of that, also full disclosure, I did not read the memo, how is the financial aspect of what we've been doing to be good citizens and funding our police department, how will, how will that work in terms of the merger of the two departments?
So your question is sort of about the assets that we have saved for and the accounts that we maybe haven't used yet but have set aside?
Exactly. So we've been doing that. Will that continue into the future? Or how is, I know that's nitty-gritty stuff, but that's an important financial question.
I see the chief nodding that he can answer. Okay.
So the answer is yes. Buckland will continue to do that. Part of the intermunicipal agreement is to continue to stick funds away essentially for a stabilization fund that would be there to fund things at half cost for things like a cruiser or, or anything else that pops up as a capital expense. The, one thing that came up actually during, during a Finance Committee meeting that we ran by the Collins Center, who's been working heavily with this after we received that $200,000 grant, was what happens if Buckland, you know, pays their policing bill essentially and we get to the end of the year or, yeah, I guess it would be the end of the year, it's a monthly bill, but they overpaid or, you know. There's a, in the IMA, there is a true, a true up clause. So at the end of the year, we go over all the finances with both Finance Committees, boards, and distinguish what exactly, you know, goes back to each town appropriately. And part of that, really, that the Oversight Committee, that Oversight Committee is not necessarily dictating what the police department does. In fact, that's not what it's there for. It's there solely to be, basically, helping out with decision makings for the financial aspect of the two towns, which is, you know, again, it goes to the transparency part about...
So we will continue to save here toward our part?
Yes.
And if we overpay, we will get that money back?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Del Castillo?
One other important factor here, the, as you know, the Shelburne Police Department is no longer housed in the village. It's on Route Two. Part of this agreement is that there will be a police department office, probably in Town Hall, but somewhere on this side of the bridge.
Oh, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, I'm looking at the microphones. I'm not seeing anyone else standing near a microphone. Okay, come on down to the microphone, Ms. Florio.
Janice Florial, 19 Monroe Ave. I'm wondering if there's been any indication of whether there are citizens in Buckland ready to step up and serve on this committee? And if they weren't before, would that affect anything with going forward?
Who would like to answer that question? Who's the Select Board, yes? Mr. Del Castillo?
I am, for one. We haven't solicited interest at this point, so there hasn't been any...
Are you volunteering or are you asking another question? Okay, Ms. Dukes is volunteering. Okay. So you've had reason to believe that there are people...
I'm sure there were.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, you know, and again, Madam Moderator, if you don't mind, as far as the apartment, you know, in and out of the village, again, I want to thank you all for the support that not only the Buckland, but the Shelburne Police Department has had. It's been a rough couple of years. And, you know, I'm hoping that folks feel like comfortable enough to obviously come up and discuss anything with the police department, so.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Jeff Gang, Upper Street. I understand the conditions that are leaving thanks to the police reform bill to the need to have full-time officers. So I like, I get why, it's, I guess I just want to register my discomfort with the choice between 53% budget increase and 53% plus $30,000 or whatever, you know, if we didn't combine. I'm uncomfortable with precedent that it sets. Like, I'm here in support of this municipalization, but I just want to register that, like, we need, we need the budget not to be increasing by this amount in the future. And I know that it's partially funded by grants that's going to be going away. So like, I'm hoping to see a plan from the police, the combined police department that looks to limit these budget increases so we don't just keep putting money towards this.
We agree.
Seeing a lot of nodding over here, Mr. Gang, so duly noted. Anyone else want to come down to the microphone and ask any questions? While Mr. Wyman is coming down, what will the cars say?
The cars will say Shelburne Police Department on the side. Yep, yep, yep.
John Wyman, North Street. If there's going to be a police presence in town, possibly at Town Hall, what happens to the existing police station?
I love that question, but it is not something that we can debate in the, in the context of this. I mean, someone can answer one sentence, but this isn't an article that would allow us to debate the use of that building. So I just want to say, you can say one thing, but we can't get into a whole thing about it.
So that, the decision of the future...
Put your mouth near the microphone, please.
The future of 69 and a half Conway Street would be that of the Select Boards once, if and when this is approved and we settle through the initial, the initial few months, this would be an agenda item. And certainly, the public's comment would be welcomed and appreciated as we sort that out.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Article Three, please raise your card. Okay, and you can put them down. All those opposed to Article Three, please raise your card. Okay, the article passes. It is not unanimous. Thank you very much. And we are moving on to our budget, Article Five. So I would like you all to take a moment to get to that page. I asked you to dog ear, which if you wrote page numbers, was page 18, but it says at the top, FY 2024 Buckland Operating Budget. There is no motion and no activity on Article Four. So if everyone is at that page, big old spreadsheet, this article deals with the following sections, okay? So you can see that it's broken down into sections where it shows you exactly how much was spent last year, the year before, what's being requested here, what the Finance Committee recommended, and what the percent change is. We are looking at the general government section, led there by my stipend, follow along. And then that includes accounting, assessor's office, the Building and Grounds Department, the town clerk's office, the boards and committees, the auditor and insurance, and the payments to the FRCOG. Then flip the page. We're also doing the protection of persons and property section. So having just voted to share police services, this is the, this is the money associated with that. And you can see it also includes building inspectors, emergency management, animal control, tree warden. The next section says education. We are not voting on that in Article Five. Those are separate warrants that we, warrant articles we'll be talking about. But we are voting on the Public Works section below that. So you can see that's highway salaries and the transfer station, and then some grant match. And then the next section is called Human Services and includes the Animal Inspector Stipend, the Boards of Health, Senior Center, Veteran Services. We're voting on that. Now turn the page. The next section is Culture and Recreation. So the libraries, the rec department, some parties we're planning for under events. And, oh, this leads me to remind you all that apparently the pool will be opening on June 30th. So be there in your bathing suit. And then Insurance and Retirement is the final section there. So all those things I just read you are what we're about to vote on when we're going to make a motion and it's going to be seconded. And then if you have a question about any one of those things, no question is too small. There are no dumb questions. This is your money and you are here to answer, ask questions about it if you have any. We will, we will accept them all. So I will now entertain a motion.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,808,575 to fund the town operating budget for fiscal year 2024.
to fund the town operating budget for fiscal year 2024 as line item appropriations and as shown in the table below.
Okay, it's been made and seconded. And you did hear a little bit from Larry about what the various amounts are. Does anyone have any questions? If so, you would come down to the mic. Yes, Mr. Del Castillo?
I just want to point out, under the senior center budget here, this is the existing consortium. Last year, this town meeting and the Ashfield and Shelburne Town Meetings passed a request for special legislation to create a West County Senior Services District. That is now law, thanks largely to Representative Lay, and we are now able to form that district. This is not that. This is the current senior center budget, and there will be a process in place to prepare an operating plan and a budget for the senior services district for FY 25. And we are soliciting members of the Board of Managers for that task, and you are welcome to apply.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the budget? Yes, Ms. Consolo?
So I just.
Street name?
Paula Consolo, 17 Cemetery Road. I just want to point out to everyone that this is our general budget, so if we don't pass it, this is where the override would mean, and we don't pass the override, items in this budget are the items that would get cut.
That's helpful, thank you. Yes, good point. This will be the place you'll be coming back to if that election does not pass. Okay, got it. All right, not seeing any questions. All those in favor of the FY 24 budget, please raise your card. Okay, you can put it down. All those opposed? Okay, the article passes. It is not unanimous. Thank you very much. Rep. Lay, do you want to say anything to the group or are you just here to watch us do our thing?
Just curious.
All right, well, thank you very much for, please go back to Boston and tell them we need more money. $6,000 increase in state aid was not enough. Okay. Yeah, right. We needed it actually yesterday. Okay. All right, we're moving on to Article 6, which is about a bunch of special line items that you can see. Now, if you're going to leave that budget, you're going to flip all the way back to the back to the warrant, and you can see that Article 6 has a little table about what special line items these are. But it's essentially assessors, revaluation, auditors' expenses, tax maps, tax title expenses, a personnel reserve fund, and grant match expenses. Yes, sir.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $69,736 for the purpose of funding special line items in the town operating budget for fiscal year 2024 as line item appropriations and shown in the table below, and further to authorize that unspent amounts in said line items may be carried forward for use in following fiscal years without further appropriation.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions about these special line items? I always like the name of this one. They're special somehow. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of Article 6, please raise your card. All right, you can put it down. All those opposed? Okay, the article passes unanimously. We are moving on to Article 7, our assessment to the Mohawk Trail Regional School District.
That moderator can move that.
Yes.
Can you? She's saying she is.
Yeah, yeah, she will in a second. First, she has to move it. Yeah. I thought one worked for the chief. Just grab onto it. Oh, no, it's not working. Okay.
Oh, great. Look at this. It's a fancy one with no chord. Martha Thervis, 7 Charlemont Road. I move that the town appropriate, raise and appropriate the sum of $2,793,688 for the Mohawk Trail Regional School District operating assessment for fiscal year 2024 as a line item appropriation.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, and as our school committee rep, would you like to tell us a little bit about it?
One of them.
One of them, thank you.
So before we get into the actual budget numbers, I just want to talk for a minute about what you're getting for your tax dollars at Mohawk Trail Regional District. I want to talk about the transformation that's taking place in this district, because too often I hear people talk, tell me that Mohawk Trail isn't what it used to be, that it's going downhill. They're right. It's not what it used to be. The demographics have changed, the state requirements of us have changed, student interests have changed, and even more importantly, student needs have changed, especially after COVID. So let me tell you a little bit about today's Mohawk Trail. First of all, it's a pre-K to 12 district. It's not just this building. There are three other elementary, there are three elementary schools, and our superintendent and the school committee are very committed to making it a pre-K to 12 district, that students come to our schools in kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, and they stay in our schools all the way through grade 12. A big part of what's happening is the enrollment is up. It's not up a lot, but it's no longer declining. We, enrollment is up from 775 throughout the district in June of '22 to 811 in April. At the high school, middle school, high school, it's gone from 266 last June to 288 today. We had 60, at BSE, it's gone up slightly, 273 to 277. We had 68 choice students at BSE last June. We now have 78 choice students. At Mohawk Trail, we had 18, and we now have 21. A big part of that is our teaching staff. We have a staff that, some of whom are teachers at UMass, some of whom are presenting our work in these schools and engaging math students in a different curriculum. They're presenting that at state and national conferences. We have a special education teacher who represented our district and our state in Washington, DC, to advocate on behalf of our special education students. It's a truly dedicated teaching staff, many of whom have been here for years, and they care about each and every Mohawk Trail student. So let me give you just a brief snapshot. I don't have any. I need a table.
You can use the select board's table.
I know. That's what I'm looking. It's called sharing. So let me just give a brief snapshot of today's Mohawk Trail student. 77% of Mohawk Trail Regional School students, this building, are taking advanced coursework. That's because we've opened up our honors programs to all students. 77% are taking either an AP course, and we offer 10 AP courses, or they're taking other advanced coursework in the sciences or mathematics. 76% of those students who take the AP classes are earning credit for college. They pass the AP exams. Recent Mohawk Trail graduates have moved on to a wide variety of colleges and universities, including Dartmouth, Mount Holyoke, Clark, Penn State, Northeastern, the University of Michigan, the UMass Honors College. They also go to community colleges. They go on to work programs. They go on to technical training, and they go into the military. The goal is to create a program that allows students to discover their passion and to pursue it once they leave these walls. So we also have a create, in order to help them find these passions while they're here, we've created a number of internship programs, dual enrollment with GCC so they can earn college credit, internships with local and regional businesses and other work-based learning opportunities, and there is a, we've created pathways, defined course pathways for students who are interested in such careers as manufacturing, medical, business, entrepreneurship, and there's many, many other pathways. If you go onto the Mohawk Trail website and you look at the course catalog for Mohawk Trail High School students, you'll see the pathways clearly defined. For students at BSE, there's a new literacy curriculum that was launched this year that buttresses the mathematics curriculum that was started last year. And as I said, we're working very hard to keep all of the BSE students and other elementary students in our district after they leave grade 6. We very much realize that that is an important breaking point for parents and students to make their decision about where they're going next. So we've, we're working very hard with athletics, with theater, with music programs to bring those students into this building and to bring these students into their buildings to create an overall community that they are a part of, that they know they're a part of, and that they want to remain a part of. So I would encourage everybody here to, at some point, come into this building or into the BSE building, see the students, talk with the teachers, come to a program, come to the play tonight, come to the celebration of learning that happens every year, come to one of the open houses, talk with the teachers, get an idea of what is really happening today in this building and in our schools. Okay, now I'll move to the budget.
You already did that.
The total proposed Mohawk Trail budget for FY 24 is about $25.2 million. It's an increase of about 5.7%. We understand that there are, there's a big increase in the required minimum contribution, which we don't have any control over. But in order to kind of help the towns with what is an overall assessment increase, we are spending about 4.7 million dollars from our grants. We've been very active in trying to get grant funding for some of our programs, including having received about $600,000 from several foundations to completely restructure the Mohawk Trail Regional School, this school, middle school, high school curriculum. And that's some of the program that we've just discussed. So we've really worked hard to try and keep the assessments as low as possible. We have had the benefit for the last couple of years, several years, of federal COVID funding that's helped us keep assessments down. That funding runs out this year, and we are totally, totally aware of that. So as a result of our trying to use some of our own funding, grant funding, revolving funds and so forth to keep the assessments down, the overall assessments to the towns are up only 2.94% over last year. And I want to thank Paula Consolo and all of the other members of the town finance committees who met with our budget subcommittee religiously through this process. Their input was extremely valuable, and we're hoping that they will continue to work with us in the days ahead. So there are four areas of major cost increases in the budget. Transportation has increased by 16%, primarily because we have a regular busing contract and that goes up each year, higher fuel prices, and a real huge jump in the cost of special education transportation. So if there are students that go to, that live in our district that we cannot serve, we transport them to programs that can meet their needs, and the cost of that transportation has risen considerably. Salaries and benefits are up about 4%. Maintenance and operations, about 7%. And our school choice charter and out-of-district tuition is up about 14%. And part of that is because the state told special education providers that they could raise their tuition amounts by 14%. Again, it's nothing that we can control. We don't have a lot of new programs or initiatives because we just can't fund them. We do have some additions that we're trying to fund with, excuse me, trying to staff with staff we have that are in pursuit of our five-year strategic plan. We'll begin teaching American Sign Language in the middle and high school, and we're using existing staff, and we're going to be using existing staff again to begin some theater performing arts programming again in the middle school, high school. And we're going to continue to maintain the new math and literacy programs that we began this year and last year in the elementary programs. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to find the funding that we need to continue to exist here. We've had a sustainability study that we did this year with some donated funds. That study looked at four different areas, demographics, enrollment, fiscal conditions in facilities, and educational programming. We've gotten that report. We're digesting it as a school committee. The next step is to bring that to the community, to talk about what those results are, to, we're going for a grant with our help from our state rep, to do a second part of that study, which will be, okay, here's all the data. What does that look like for options? What does our community want us to do about the difficulties that we face and how we're, you know, and how are we going to deal with it? So that's coming up. One clear issue is that we do not get enough state funding. We have not had a substantial increase in our Chapter 70 educational funding in 20 years. We are up 3% from where we were in 20, I mean, in 2003. So last Thursday, we took a bus load, again, a donated bus. We took a bus load of folks, 25 people from West County. We went to the State House. We got T-shirts. We met Natalie, very, very hopefully got us some meetings with some legislators to push for legislation that would fully fund the Rural Schools Commission report that recommended 60, an annual appropriation of $60 million to go to rural and declining enrollment schools. Natalie's promoting a bill, has proposed a bill to do that. Joe Commerford in the Senate has proposed a similar bill, and we need everybody's help to get those bills passed. And we're going to be letting you know how you can do that, who you should write to, because this is extremely important. We are not going to be able to cut our way out of this problem. So we're going to be working very hard to do that. I think that's kind of all I have. So Buckland's assessment is this year.
We just heard it, yeah.
You just heard it?
Yep.
Okay. The biggest change in that is the required minimum contribution. It's about $100,000 up. The assessment is about $100,000 up from last year. Over half of that amount is the increase in your required minimum contribution. The other major increase is transportation. You heard that that's a bigger expense for us this year, but it also reflects the fact that we've gotten less reimbursement for our transportation from the state because they're a year or two behind in reimbursing, and so that reflects the fact that we had fewer buses on the road during COVID. So next year, there's a proposal to fund transportation at 100%. We've all heard that before, haven't we? And if that happens, you know, our transportation expenses are back up and we'll get more reimbursement, but that's a year or two away. I think that's all I have to say. I'm sorry, it went on for longer than 10 minutes.
It's okay. This is a huge amount of what we spend every year. We need to have an orientation.
Yep. So I certainly hope you'll support the budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you, Ms. Thervis. If anyone has questions, you should come to one of the microphones and. It's a race. Okay, you can have that one. Nope? Okay. Okay, Ms. Dukes?
Charlotte Dukes, St. Mary's Street. I don't actually have a question. I actually have a statement since our state rep is in the room here. And so I just would like to remind all of us that anything proposed and passed in the state legislature requires all of the state legislators to approve, to raise and appropriate, and to fund things. Our reality is, we live rural, and we don't have a concentration, not only of people, but also of legislators, who actually care about us. And that is the reality. Because the transportation, when we went regional, was supposed to be funded 100% every year from the beginning, and that has not happened. And so what is happening, what we are facing, is an unsustainable way to run our schools. And no matter how hard we work, and no matter how much grant funding we get, that is not a sustainable financial way of doing anything.
Thank you. Oh, you're not done. Oh, you're not done.
So we can do what we can do, and we are doing what we are doing. But it's really important for us to remember what the reality that we are facing is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dukes. Remind us your name and street. I think it'll work.
I'm Lynn Kelsey, 39th and Main Street. In my next life, I want to come back as a singer, and I want to be able to conquer publics, do you think? Is that one question to, I guess, the superintendent? Is in the February 4th Financial Committee Minutes. Now, the nice thing about these committees, their minutes are posted in the Town Hall, and you can read them, you can get a copy. I spent a lot of time there, I'm only 50, reading minutes from various committees. And this particular committee minutes interested me in regard to what's going on right now. So the Finance Committee, February 4th, 2023, it says, sorry, I'm going to be...
It's okay. Take your time.
So it says, Martha Thurber from the Mohawk School Committee met with us, very introduced, and they had a discussion. Some of these discussions were highlighted by the School Committee, I mean, School Committee of Finance Committee. It says, according to these documents, this document, Martha Thurber had said, enrollment has dropped by 13%, while costs have risen by 17%. Rural and declining enrollment schools are more expensive to operate than urban and increasing enrollment schools. Another paragraph said, while losing students because we have less declining population, younger democratic decline, while older democratic...
Demographic.
Thank you. And I have a demographic, demographic, anyway. Increased. We're constantly fighting battle over narrative about Mohawk High School. Recently, elementary enrollment is up at BSE in Sanderson. We're trying hard to keep middle school kids. Tech school is a large source of student loss. That's an interesting blade, because parents and students and the freshmen and sophomore age, they want to go where they have the most exciting experience of learning and looking at their future. To blame technical school for a loss, correct the tech school. They provide a service that isn't offered at Mohawk. These are just some thoughts, and that's them, and that's, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelsey. Somebody else? Anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Consolo?
Paula Consolo, Cemetery Road. I just want to say that you have to understand that, yes, enrollment is down from like the heyday of Mohawk, but our funding is level. We haven't gotten hardly anything more from the state for 30 years. And when you think about it, if you have 20 kids in a classroom, the biggest cost of that classroom is the teacher, right? So 20 kids, the state gives you funding based on how many kids you have. 20 kids, and now maybe we have 14, we still get the same amount of funding. It doesn't work. You know, I mean, I'm sorry, we get less funding for those 14 kids because they base it per child. So it'll never work as enrollment goes down. It just doesn't work. And that's not our fault. That's just demographics. People don't have as many children as they used to have.
Thank you.
And if I could just add one thing?
Yes.
The Rural Schools Commission, there was a special commission on the fiscal health of rural schools. Natalie was one of the chairs. Our former Senator Adam Hines was the other chair of that committee. They issued a report in December that lays out very clearly, with a tremendous amount of data, what the rural school's financial problem is. It is a lack of efficiency. The state foundation budget, which is the basis for Chapter 70 funding, assumes a school district of 2,500 kids. That's not us. We don't have the kind of operational efficiencies that can be gained in other schools. So if you are interested in that report, you can find it by Googling it. It's also on our website. It is a fascinating read, and it makes an extremely strong case for the recommendations that were made in that report for annual appropriation of $60 million for rural and declining enrollment schools.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing anyone standing at any microphones, so we're going to vote on the school budget. All those in favor of Article 7, please raise your card. Okey-dokey, you can put it down. All those opposed? All those opposed? Okay, the article passes. It is not unanimous. All right. Ahem. Yes?
If I could make another motion, please. I would like to move to advance Articles 22 to 24, to hear them now. Those are all, those three articles relate to the Mohawk Trail Regional School District amendments to the regional agreement, and if it's possible, I would like to have those discussed at this point.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, so what has just happened is, we've been following along, number my number, right? 1234567, except for the ones we did in the consent. What Ms. Thurber is proposing is that we would, since we're already talking about Mohawk, move all the rest of the Mohawk articles up here. So you can see that near the end, there are Articles 22, 23, and 24. So now I'm going to ask you if that's okay with you. And if you don't, you know, if a majority doesn't vote yes, we're going to get to them at the end. And if you vote yes, we're going to talk about them now. Okay, all those in favor of advancing Articles 22, 23, and 24, to take them up now, please raise your card. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, the article passes. It is not unanimous. Not the article, the motion to move them up. So we are now going to, you're going to flip forward to Article 22. I will entertain a motion to open Article 22.
Thank you.
And all three of these are about how we share costs with the rest of our fellow district members.
Correct. So I move that the town vote to amend the Mohawk Trail Regional School District/Regional District Agreement by striking the language as presented in the warrant contained in Section 4, apportionment of expenses among member towns, subsection A through J.
Thank you. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Can you please tell the voters what we're voting on?
Yes, and I will say that Articles 22, 23, and 24 are all related. What we want to do is amend the Mohawk Trail Regional Agreement to redefine the way enrollment is counted for all of our member towns. Currently, we, the portion that makes up your above minimum required contribution to your assessment is based on a five-year rolling average of the number of students that Buckland has within the Mohawk Trail District. Under state law, towns are financially responsible for public school students regardless of where they go to school. There, what we'd like to do is change it from just counting the students who are in the Mohawk Trail District to counting students of what you call, what they call, foundation enrollment. Foundation enrollment is, for a town, is every student for whom the town is financially responsible. So that includes charter students, it includes choice students, it includes out-of-district special education students. Foundation enrollment is the way the state calculates Chapter 78, and basically every other type of aid that the state gives a school is based on foundation enrollment. It also is the basis for awarding grants for basically doing anything that the state has anything to do with with regard to education. So what we would like to do is to include those students in our all-towns enrollment count. We would like to do that over a five-year period, so that next year, we would be using one year's worth of foundation enrollment and four years' worth of what we, how we do it today, how we identify, or how we count district enrollment. The second year, we would use two years of foundation enrollment and three years of how we're doing it now, and so forth. The third year would be three years of foundation enrollment and two years of the way we're doing it. So any impact on any individual town would be very modest, but we would like to make, to bring ourselves kind of into the modern era. When we had this regional agreement, there was no school choice, there was no charter school, there was no, there wasn't any of that. So obviously, everybody went to their district school. It didn't matter. But foundation enrollment is used by every municipal district in the state. It's used by many regional schools, districts in the state. We simply want to, and this will also unify the way we do our capital assessments and our operating assessments, which have completely different methods for calculating enrollment. So we want to bring the regional agreement into kind of the 21st century, put us in a common agreement with the way the state calculates everything, and just make it a lot simpler and cleaner. I know it doesn't look simple and clean when you're looking at all this stuff.
All these pages.
That's because they require us to write, to show you everything that's being changed and what is being changed to, and the Department of Education had lots of things that it wanted to tell me to write in there, so that's why it's so long. But that's the gist of it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so we're, in this article, we're voting then, as you just heard, on changing the types of students included in each community's share of the budget. And this change would apply to everyone in the district, once it passes in all the towns. Are there any questions about this proposed change? I realize there's many pages, but I think that it was just summarized. And I do want to note that one thing I have heard questions about is, does this mean that then suddenly Buckland is paying for Buckland's charter school students? No, the district is still paying for Buckland's charter school.
Correct, and it also does, our foundation enrollment, Mohawk Trail's foundation enrollment, does not include technical school. It doesn't, Franklin Tech and all technical schools have their own foundation enrollment. It's only students who attend non-vocational public schools from our town.
Thank you. Ms. Donlin?
Andrea Donlin, 49th and Fifth Street. Martha just partially answered my question, but the rest of it is just, in this year's budget, there's a line item under school assessments called Mohawk Operating. Will that be the same line item? So it's already, what Buckland has to send out to other schools is already covered under that line item, and this will just be a different way of calculating that, same line item?
Yes, the way, what's happening now is for choice and charter students, the district pays for those students, but they're not included in any town's enrollment numbers. So in effect, all of the towns are paying for all of the charter students and all of the choice students. And the tuitions range from $5,000 for a choice student to about $25,000 for a charter student. So none of those students are included in any town's enrollment numbers, but they would be under this formula, so that they're at least, the towns don't pay directly for that, but at least those students would be included in their enrollment count for the five-year total average enrollment that becomes part of the calculation of the assessment.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Dukes?
Charlotte Dukes, St. Mary's Street. What happens if we vote this down, if it doesn't pass? And how have the other towns passed it?
It did not pass in Shelburne, and I think it's going to be a multi-year process to get this voted on.
That's why I'm hoping it's not going to be a multi-year process. Shelburne has voted it down. If we can get votes from other towns, we will go back to Shelburne. We have 12 months to pass this. So if other towns, if we have only one or two towns that vote it down, we would go back to those towns sometime within this fiscal, this coming fiscal year to vote, ask them to vote again, and try to get it done. So yes, Shelburne did vote it down. They wanted more time to study it. I get that, but it's been around, this is, it's been around for 30 years. Everybody does it this way. It doesn't really require a whole lot of study, in my mind, but that's fine. That's how they voted, and so we'll see what other towns think.
Thank you. Ms. Consolo?
Paula Consolo, Cemetery Road. So if you study this, I looked at this for just counting this year, Buckland has seven, I think, choice-out students versus some towns have 20, 25. So for just this year, this would benefit Buckland. Whether it benefits us every year, we won't know, because it's a five-years implementation, and because it's a five-year rolling average of enrollment. What this does is, it simplifies things. It only applies to half of our budget. It simplifies things, and it's fair. I mean, I just see this as fair. It's, we're responsible for these students, they should be counted in our enrollment. Other towns are responsible for their students that go to choice and charter, and it should just be counted. It's not a huge amount of money. It's not going to be so revolutionary in any way, but for us, if you look at this year, it would be beneficial.
Thank you for that. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else at a microphone. All right, all those in favor of this change to how we calculate our assessment, Article 22, please raise your hand with your card in it. Okay, you can put it down. All those opposed? The article passes. It is not unanimous. Okay, we move on to another article changing the budget development.
This is related. I move that the town vote to amend the Mohawk Trail Regional School District Regional Agreement by striking language contained in Section 6 budget as presented in the town warrant.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded, and can you succinctly describe what we're voting on here?
Yes, this is just another place where they, where the sections that calculate your assessment are referenced, so we had to make amendments to change all the pieces of the regional agreement where this language appeared. This is the second of two where it appears.
So we are making no changes to anything about how the budget is developed, other than the addition of those kids that we just talked about?
Precisely.
Students, okay. Thank you. Are there any questions about this? Okay, all those in favor of Article 23, please raise your hand. Okay, you can put it down. All those opposed? Article passes. It is not unanimous, and we are moving on to our final 24, Article 24 amendment to our agreement, which is the effective date.
Yes, this is very controversial. I move to see if the town will vote to amend the Mohawk Trail Regional School District Regional Agreement by changing the effective date of the regional agreement.
I really can't believe we have to do this. Okay.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Does anyone have any questions about changing the effective date? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All righty, and you can put it down. All those opposed? Okay, the article passes. It is unanimous. We are now flipping back in our pages. We are done with the Mohawk ones, so go all the way back to when we left where we were, which was, thank you. We are now on Article 8. Thank you, Elizabeth. No, Art was, 8 was in the consent. So we're in Article 9, which has to do with the tuition and transportation for students we send to the Smith-Vogue schools. So to be clear, we are members of the tech school district. We are not members of the Smith vocational schools, so we have to pay that separately when students go there.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $64,000 for tuition and transportation of students to Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School for fiscal year 2024 as a line item appropriation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any questions about this article? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Article 9, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? Article passes unanimously. All right, Article 10 is about the Franklin County Technical School Operating Assessment.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $211,330 for the Franklin County Technical School Operating Assessment for fiscal year 2024 as a line item appropriation.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips and Mr. Wells, are there any questions about this, the tech schools operating assessment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, tech school passes unanimously. Okay, the next two articles were in our consent agenda, right? That was the capital assessment and the wastewater treatment, 11, 12, so was 13, you can just cross these off, so was 14, so, so was 15, and we are on to Article 16, the town capital expenses.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate from free cash the sum of $222,500 to be placed in departmental capital accounts in accordance with the table below.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Do you all see the table that shows you how much we're putting in to different amounts, to different special capital accounts? Okay, does anyone have a question about any of those capital accounts? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the town capital expense article, raise your hand, okay, you can put it down. All those opposed? Okay, the article passes, it is not unanimous. Article 17, we already also dealt with in our consent agenda. This next article is going to require a two-thirds vote because we're establishing a stabilization account. And so when you're socking money away somewhere where it's hard to get at, you, it requires a higher level of approval from the residents. And this is a stabilization account where we would put the money that this community is receiving as part of all the national opioid manufacturing and distribution settlements, where it can then be spent from, for the appropriate uses only. Yes?
Is there someone else?
No, I'm hoping someone is going to move it.
Okay.
Oh, oh, sorry, no, they are not here today, yes.
Oh, all right.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 40, Section 5B, to create a new special purpose stabilization fund to be known as the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which may be expended for all of the purposes allowed by law, including those outlined in applicable opioid litigation settlement documents, the document prepared by the Substance Abuse Bureau of the Commonwealth's Office of Health and Human Services Department, found at HDTX, et cetera.
You don't need to read that. No, no, you don't need to read that.
In title debatment strategies and consistent with any state guidelines or regulations further clarifying the allowable uses of opioid litigation settlement funds, and further to adopt the last paragraph of said Section 5B and dedicate to such fund without further appropriation 100% of the opioid litigation settlement funds received by the town.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. I would just note that the Substance Abuse Bureau of the Health and Human Services Department has been changed to Substance Addiction Bureau as part of the ongoing effort in this state to not stigmatize people with substance use disorder. Okay, this motion has been made and seconded, there are a whole bunch of different settlements that have happened, and there are more coming, and each of them, there's a giant settlement formula that says how much Buckland gets based on how many prescription, opioid prescriptions were written to people in Buckland, how many overdose deaths, things like that. And that money will go into this revolving account. And would someone from the select board like to speak to who will be giving advice on how to spend that money?
Board of Health.
The Board of Health?
The Board of Health.
Okay, Board of Health, okay. Are there any questions about Article 18? Okay, seeing none. If this isn't unanimous, I'm going to have to count you all, because we have to prove it's two-thirds, you can't just kind of eyeball two-thirds, okay? So just so you know, you might have to hold it up there a little while. All right, all those in favor, please raise your card. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, the article passes unanimously. Thank you for that. And Article 19 requires a four-fifths vote, because, interesting, it's a strange thing about Massachusetts state government, but if you have a bill that didn't get paid in the year it was supposed to get paid, it's kind of a big deal, and so we have to make sure that we're all okay with paying it. I know it's going to look silly how small the bill is, but this is just how it works. Okay. I would entertain a motion for Article 19.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate from available funds as encumbered in fiscal year 23 to pay unpaid fiscal year 2022 invoice and unpaid FY '22 invoice as listed below, Eversource $158.
Thanks, Eversource, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any questions about the old bill from Eversource? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, you can put it down. All those opposed? All those offering to pay it themselves? Okay, thank you, and we are moving on, that was unanimous, Elizabeth. And then Article 20, which is about reconstructing Upper North Street. Woohoo! I see you, Mr. Wyman. Some people are even happier than the rest of us who have to drive over it.
Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to, A, authorize the select board to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain in such terms as the select board deems appropriate, the fee to and/or permanent and temporary easement in, on, under, and over the parcels of land located on North Street and approximately shown on plans entitled Buckland Right-of-Way Property Plan.
You don't have to keep reading.
You tell me when to stop.
I think you can stop now.
Second.
Okay, you're all looking at this, right? You don't need Mr. Phillips to read it to you. Okay, all right. Yes, the motion has been made and seconded, and would like to hear from Heather Butler, our town administrator.
I'll keep this as brief as possible.
Microphone.
Any better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Much like the tip, the tip project on Conway Summers South and Conway Road, this project is being funded by Mass DOT, the Transportation Improvement Plan. It is about a half a mile and has zero culverts.
Yay!
Zero culverts.
It's been a hard, hard few years for Heather.
Part of the, the tip, the tip process is that the road has to be slightly widened in some areas and to accommodate a sidewalk that will pick up where the existing sidewalk has left off, and will go to 112. In order to accomplish that, there are several temporary easements that need to be taken from property owners along that route. We would do this in accordance with the Federal Acquisition Plan, which requires us to, A, have the select board, have, have this body authorize the select board to then authorize me, to then authorize Pam, to reach out to each of those residents in accordance with the, it's a multiple, multiple step process, including a full appraisal and an offer for that, the appraised value of those properties. So it's pretty complex, but it starts here with your vote. The anticipated start date, it would be the spring of 2024, which is like next spring, like soon. So we're really excited about this and happy to answer any questions, but that's essentially what you're voting for, is to start that process, to take those mostly temporary easements that allows us to proceed with this project.
Thank you very much for describing that. Are there any questions about this process? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Yes, yes, I see yours, Mr. Wyman. Okay, you can put it down. All those opposed? Okay, the article passes unanimously. Okay. You're up.
Kate Conlin, 30 Hausroad. Ms. Moderator, I move that the town vote to participate in the activities of the Mohawk Trail Woodlands Partnership, also known as the Woodlands Partnership of Northwest Massachusetts, per the board's October 2022 vote to recommend a name change, as provided for in Section 91 of Chapter 209 of the Acts of 2018, an Act promoting climate change, adaptation, environmental and natural resource protection, and investment in recreational assets and opportunity to the environmental bond deal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, and I understand you'd like to tell us a little about it.
Sure. So I serve on the board of the Woodlands Partnership, representing Massachusetts forest lines alongside local land trusts, regional planning agencies, watershed associations, UMass Schools of Public Health and Conservation, and other nonprofit agencies from Western Franklin and Northern Berkshire Counties. This cross-section of our community directs the priorities of the partnership, and that is enhanced with additional voices bringing their concerns to the table. This is why Buckland needs to be a part of it. The partnership's initiatives seek to conserve and preserve forest land and promote resiliency in our forests and towns to protect the rural landscape. If we vote to join, that means we send a town representative to serve on the board. It also means we would be eligible to apply for state grants offered annually to fund local needs supporting conservation, nature-based tourism and recreation, and municipal needs. More than 1 million has already been awarded to partnership member towns for a variety of projects such as trail maintenance, conservation of land leading to regional trail connection, recreational mackling, town facility upgrades and equipment, climate-oriented open space and forest plans, riparian restoration and tree planting, drainage and erosion control, among many others. Of the 21 towns in the partnership region, we are one of four that has not yet voted to join. I hope that we can join to benefit from this initiative.
Thank you very much, Ms. Conlin. Are there any questions? Yes, Ms. Sinclair?
Yes.
Oh, that's the dead one. Why don't you just come with this one over here? You all just line up at this. It's okay, you may walk on through.
Ms. Moderator, I'm wondering if I, I don't have questions.
Can you, you just say your name and street.
I'm sorry, Janet Sinclair, 71 Ashville Street.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Moderator, I don't have questions, but I would like the opportunity to speak about this issue, because I was the active representative for the town of Buckland for three years before the law passed, people want to pair with this partnership. And what that means is that I went to meetings once a month for three years, I did all the records requests for this partnership, I was looking for, why did this partnership even exist? I even hired someone to go to all the towns in the partnership before the law passed to talk to the select boards. The select boards, almost like, I think every single one of them didn't even know what the partnership was. I'm looking at this brochure, I didn't have, I'm, I have my own environmental organizations, but I don't have the money to print it for sure, otherwise I would have maybe done that. This is talked about as something that was generated, let me look at the quote here, somewhere it says that this was sort of a grassroots effort, and I did all the records requests for all the money, and I just want to let you know, this is not a grassroots effort. This was a project that was started in Boston by the Environmental, whatever, Office of Environment. Hundreds of thousands of dollars went for funding to the FERCOG as well as Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. Right in the documents itself, it said that this money is to sell the project to the towns. It wasn't that the towns approached anyone, it was exactly the opposite. When I was on the partnership board, I, one of the things that was, whatever it was, one of the things that was going on was explicitly funding public pellet facility in our region. We, I've worked with other environmental organizations who have tried really hard to stop funding for biomass pellet facilities in our region due to climate issues as well as public health issues. We testified against this bill in Boston that included physicians, environmental experts, ecologists, that overwhelmingly at the hearing in Boston was opposition to this project. It included a Nobel Prize winner who won a prize because he authored the, some of those, you know, IPCC reports about climate change. So basically, what's going on here is that there's a tremendous amount of funding coming in through US Forest Service who promotes clearcutting in White Mountain National Forest, also Green Mountain National Forest. New England Forestry Foundation is now administering this program for, for the region. New England Forestry Foundation controls 1.2 million acres of land in New England, and only 2,000 acres of it is forever well easements. The rest of it is, let's log our land. Our region is slated by the powers that be, the money that's coming in here. Our region is, has more trees on the ground than other regions, and the plan is to log more here. Sorry, I'm a little nervous.
But can I just, I just want to interject for one moment, I want to make sure that what you, I understand your concerns about logging, I want to make sure that this, that's not what we're voting on here, we're voting on whether we join this program.
We're voting to join a project that is as described by me. So I feel like I am an expert on this, I was there, I don't think anybody else has looked at the funding the way that I have. So I just, sorry, I was, I'm sorry.
No, it's, it's okay, it's just important that we are only debating the thing we are here to debate.
We are debating the project, which is as I describe it, and if it's described otherwise, it's not being described accurately. The other thing is, we can't ever vote out to get out of this. So basically, what's happening is, it's almost to me, because I work in this area of environmental concerns a lot, is this is like a tsunami of federal money coming toward our region who wants to, and this is what the partnership is for, this is what it's for. The only reason that the pellet facility was not included in the law was because I was sitting on that board and brought people in to stop, to stop that part of the law. So to me, this is just, do we want the feds and the US Forest Service and even the Forestry Foundation having a big impact on what we do here? We can all log our land, I own land, you can put it under Chapter 61, do whatever you want to do. But the, the grants are $20,000 to the town, a dollar per capita per month, and that's to enable something that we don't even know what it is. There's so much money here, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sinclair. I did actually identify one question you had in there, which was, which was, how does one vote to get out? So you don't, you don't, I don't.
I was there when the law was being written and passed. You can't vote to get out.
Okay, I want to just make sure we're, thank you. And how about you answer, Ms. Conlin, that question, just that, you know, just answer that question, and then we'll keep going, then we'll be.
Janet expressed that concern Monday of last week, so I brought it to the administrative agent, who's Lisa Hayden at that New England Forestry Foundation, and she said that a town, if they weren't interested in participating anymore, they just wouldn't send someone to the board, and all of the initiatives are voluntary, even if they do vote to join. So yes, we absolutely cannot participate anymore if we want to.
But wait, but is there, I think the question was, is there a process to vote to leave the partnership? Okay.
There's a process to leave, and there's no process demanding that you say.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. McCusker? No, he was there first. Yep.
Mike McCusker, 32 Up Street. I'm here to open my, or offer my opinion for supporting this project. I was involved in the earlier stages peripherally, and I can, what I have observed over the last 10 years or whatever, that it's evolved. So what it once was initially presented as and possibly could have been is no longer on the table. I'm very clear about that. I've been studying this from a little bit afar, not being involved on the committee per se. But I admire and appreciate that the projects that have been funded in our region, I was talking to my friend from Ashfield a couple days ago, saying, what did you guys do with your $20,000? And they proceeded to tell me about the, at Sanders Academy, they have a huge network of trails now up there, that they've had to bring in gravel and use machinery and have an interpretive aspect to it. And they also have like a fitness component. This is for the school. So I admire that they're doing that. I also appreciate that there are times when any town understandably doesn't want to get involved taking money from the feds or anywhere elsewhere. And I'm reminded going all the way back, like 30 years from when one of our esteemed select board members did not want to ever get a grant. And I can tell you that our select board nowadays seems like they're motivated to receive monies back. We pay taxes. We all pay taxes. We pay town taxes, we pay state taxes, federal taxes, what have you. And if you don't learn how to file your income tax returns for any of those, the money doesn't come back to you. So this is money that we should be, we should be participating in. I think that the project, as I read about it, learned about it, is very honorable, and I think that we shouldn't be holding back from, well, yes, year, I remember when logging was all about pellet stoves. That's absolute total history. It's nowhere, nowhere near as good as they mentioned logging. They're interested in conservation and preservation for legacy forests and the like. So I hope you'll support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCusker, Ms. Summer?
Pia Lee Summer, 83 L Street. Conservation and preservation sounds great. I just want to know what guarantee there is that joining this is not joining a project that will also incentivize and promote the burning of biofuels? Is that written in anywhere? Or are they allowed to do that, and we will then be participating in that?
Ms. Conlin, can you answer that?
So in the enabling legislation from 2018, which created the partnership, that is explicitly forbid.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Kelsey?
Hi, Ms. Kelsey, 39 Main Street. I'm going to say, was it three or four years ago, at the Buckland Select Board, Barry was in the room, Zach was in the room, Representative from the Woodlands attended and made a presentation. It was not passed. It was not accepted that night. The select men, the board at that time, decided to bring it to a public vote and not even up to the select board members to vote entirely on that. So one of my questions, you mentioned in your video intro, that there are four towns that have not joined. Could you give the public the four towns that have not joined?
I just want, is that your only question?
I do have one.
So ask both your questions. That way you can sit down and we cannot.
The other question is, why would we vote for something, vote for something that we really don't understand? We've gotten in trouble before nationally, just in our own community. So if you really don't understand what you're being presented, or you're not, if you cannot go home and really describe it, maybe you ought to vote no.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Conlin?
So the towns that have not yet voted are Coal Rain, Savoy, and Florida, and us. Coal Rain and Savoy are looking to vote on it this year at their town meetings, which are coming up. And Florida, we're working on. When it comes to what we're actually voting to join, the only obligation to the town voting to participate is to appoint a member to the Woodlands Partnership Board. There is no financial obligation for a town that votes to participate, and it does not, and the partnership does not impose additional regulations, restrictions, or mandates in the town. And programs of the partnership as they develop will be voluntary. So basically, we're already in this region. One thing the partnership accomplished this past year is getting our region enrolled in the Federal Forest Legacy Program, which leverages federal money for privately-held conservation restrictions. Large projects, big, huge projects. And now a bunch of land trusts in our area are working on getting together projects for that. So Buckland is, was part of that. We're just not at the board meetings. So I think we should have our voice be heard there.
Thank you. Ms. Liebling?
Hi, Madeline Liebling, 71 Ashfield Street. I, one of the, one of the major aspects in this brochure is market the region, improve tourism infrastructure and support outdoor recreation, build a multipurpose forest center. I just, I just want to point out, Ms. Conlin is representing a private organization, not a nonprofit.
Right, we have forests.
It's not a nonprofit.
It's a nonprofit.
Okay, but it represents forest interests.
Okay, we're not going to get into like a whole.
Okay, sorry, but I just feel like a lot of tourism development happens in Buckland and Sheldon Falls in general. It's good, you know, business is good. We should have, you know, thriving businesses here. Sometimes it seems to me there's not transparency in these projects. Certain development, tourism development projects happen here, and I personally feel that there's not transparency about some of these things now. You know, I could be wrong. I know I'm supposed to be able to find this by looking at the town website and the agendas of the town meetings. I don't always have time to do that. We used to have a newsletter. For a while, we had a town newsletter. I think we don't have that now. But I just feel like sometimes, as a resident of the town who doesn't own a business, I feel like some of the amenities of the town for our private enjoyment as citizens get commercialized in a way that sometimes takes away our enjoyment. And I feel like there should be more transparency about that. This offers us $20,000 a year in grants for tourism development and conservation and things like that. And I would just, you know, if it crosses, I'm not personally going to vote for it, but if it does, I really want to have a way to learn more about these projects and these grants before they get passed in the town.
Duly noted. Yeah.
And I really strongly, so I, someone said, if you don't know what you're voting for, don't vote for it. And I kind of agree with that, so thank you.
Thank you. One moment. I just want to say to the select board and town administrator, I mean, I think that this is largely a comment to us just to make sure that we are having an open process when this grant is, the grant is being debated. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Oh, hang on. Ms. Dukes?
Cheryl Dukes, Sears Street. I was on the select board when this Mohawk Trails blah blah thing was happening, and I was the representative. And how Janet has described it is absolutely correct. I served on that organizing committee because I completely disagreed with what was going on. The benefit goes to private landowners, not to people in the community. It was a state-oriented program that came to us. We didn't go to them. All tourism is not a sustainable way to live your life. Any jobs that are created out of this are seasonal and low-wage jobs, which is how rural gets treated by urban. And so whatever anybody says about this partnership, we're selling ourselves short on agreeing to something that gives you $20,000 in grants.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sinclair?
Yes, Ms. Moderator, I read the rules, so I knew I could speak a second time if somebody else. Stacy?
No, you may speak, you just can't speak a third time until anybody else has.
Okay. All right, so just to correct a couple of things that were said. The partnership and its partners do promote a low-grade, a market for low-grade wood, which means wood burning and pellets. So even though it doesn't say in the brochure, there's lots of stuff not in the brochure. I could have written a different brochure, but I don't have a staff or money to do that with. Another point I wanted to make is the land conservation idea that's here. The way the law was written and the way this all passed, it averaged about 100 acres per town who joined the partnership. That means everyone here gets to vie, you know, try to get your 100 acres or some number of acres into a probably Franklin Land Trust conservation easement. So this is like the big carrot that's being given here. I have land. I would never do this. And then about the Forest Legacy Program, people probably don't know what that is. It's a big way of getting federal grants for private landowners. What happened was, when the partnership was forming in Boston, they specifically excluded the partnership parents from the Forest Legacy Program. That means in Boston, we were actually getting out of the Legacy Program. So now for people to say, yay, we did all this work to get ourselves in, what you're really looking at is fixing a problem that got created in Boston. This is a Boston-driven, money-driven effort. And what we'll be doing is enabling and encouraging stuff coming into our region that we can't even foresee because the amount, the amount of money that's coming in to encourage certain land practices is shocking. I think that we don't need to participate. We can manage our own land.
Thank you. Ms. Contrabecchi?
This is going to sound so contrary, but anyhow, Stacy Contrabecchi, 78 Ashfield Road, Massachusetts License Forester, 311. I was associated with this program from the very beginning. I was the initial appointee to a group of 20 towns that got together under the direction of the FERCOG, who got money from the DOEA because we all were concerned about conserving and preserving our forest resources, creating an economic venue to bring any sort of forest-based and tourist business into a viable light and to support that. But then the third, sort of the third spoke of that goal was to consider what it means to the town as far as physical resources and infrastructure that might be affected by any project that would be undertaken here. So it's a three-pronged process here. At any rate, I was appointed as the representative to Buckland to get together with all the other folks in the region. Average Joe James from off the street, people on Tomcons, who taught at universities, who were select board people. I had a baby and stepped back and asked for alternate people to take the seat for a time to move this forward. So Cheryl Dukes, I'm glad she was involved as the alternate. And then when Cheryl, I think, departed, Janet stepped in. And then I found my feet under me and was able to be a mom and come back to the table. And Janet and I attended nearly all of the meetings. The person that Ms., one of the ladies referred to about activity that happened in 2020, I was the person who presented to the select board in July, I'm sorry, July of 2019. And we were, we were on track to have a public information sessions about this when COVID hit, and I tried to get it virtual, and nobody knew about Zoom yet. And so we didn't get on the, we didn't get on the town meeting warrants for 2020, and then the opportunity closed, and then activity moved forward. We have a five, we have a five or 10-year plan, something along those lines. It's, it's like a business plan on how to run this organization. And one of the projects of this was almost initially funded, as far as I remember, by DOEA, by putting out these seed grants, these $20,000 grants to do these things, and the towns that have opted in. And it's sort of like, hey, thanks for stepping up. We didn't need, you didn't need to pay to come in. You didn't need to commit to take the $20,000. You don't need to participate in any of the initiatives that the organization puts forward. But come to the table monthly, whatever the period of time is, and talk with your neighbors and grow, yes, what did begin, even though it was funded, even though the moderator came from an organization that got money to organize us, all of the decisions that were made were made by people from our communities. So it is grassroots-funded. I was, I was, you know, part of this for six years. And when we did not join as a town in 2020, I stepped back because we, we cannot benefit from any of the good that happens. And one might say, as others have said, what about the bad or what could happen? Well, happily, and I'm so glad Janet, Janet and Cheryl were at the table because they got the important pieces in the legislation that said, we will, line item of not do anything associated with creating a pellet plant, burning our forests, all of these sort of things. We are here because we love the resources we have around us, and we want to continue to see forests stay as forests. So argue it any way you like, but I have been a forester for about 30 years, not a non-conventional-type forester that doesn't manage any land personally, but I am in the realm of forest certification. And I've been an auditor and a process manager and process creator to check up on people who do manage forest lands and businesses that make things out of wood and paper. And I can say, this is one of the best initiatives I've ever seen. It was a novel, it was a novel project when it was put forward because this is the only time, even the US Forest Service, you could hate them or love them, but even the US Forest Service said, there is no model in all of this country where people from the towns got together and created a plan and moved it forward, and then they staffed the board and continued to move forward their own initiatives there. You want to have a say on this? You show up at a board meeting. People have done so. We welcome that. So at any rate, I say, you know, vote, vote yes for this, and then also raise your hand to be that person to represent our community at those board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Delka Phillips?
I recall the, the meeting that Ms. Kelsey referred to, and we had a presentation, presentations very similar to this. We decided at that time, very graciously, to punt to you, and we're having the very similar conversation today. What led me, personally at least, to support this article is that we're voting to participate, to have someone at the table. That doesn't mean support. That can be loyal opposition. That can be a clarion call, that there's something bad going on, but I think we should participate.
Thank you. Mr. Gang, are you in line? Okay.
Thank you. Jeff Gang, Upper Street. I'm, I'm feeling like I'm not fully understanding what it is that we're trying to vote on. Like, I am skeptical of anything where, I know in many parts of the country, like, the logging industry, I don't know, buys up interest to sort of go along with what they're trying to do. And so I am approaching this with a skeptical eye towards that. But what I'm not understanding is like, by agreeing to participate in the partnership, which is the language in the warrant, it seems like that makes us eligible for grants. But I'm not really understanding what the downside is other than like signing off the illustrious town of Buckland to participate in this, in this agreement. Is it obligating us to do anything in the future? Is it giving a platform for, I don't know, a kind of logging interest that might pressure people to cut their, to log their land in a way that's unsustainable? Is it going to make it harder for us if they, if, I don't know, one of the logging companies that's involved in this wants to build a pellet burner, some, you know, like a pellet power plant somewhere in our town? I guess I'm not understanding, other than just saying, well, yes, we're willing to come to the table with you, and if you're going to give us money to buy our participation, like, that's okay, but we can remain skeptical and not actually commit ourselves to doing anything with the partnership? But we can remain skeptical and not actually commit ourselves to doing anything with the partnership. To me, if that's, if we're really not committing ourselves to anything, I'm inclined to take the money and like raise an eyebrow and use it to further conservation. But if anything, answer a little bit more about what it is we're committing ourselves to by agreeing to be part of the partnership.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon, would you like to address that?
Yeah, I think I already spoke to how the only commitment is to appoint someone to the board. And there's no other regulations or rules from that. I, the board leadership, the chair and the vice chair are town reps. There aren't any logging companies involved in the board. There's a, the representative from Chawarmont owns a sawmill. And all of our meetings, because we're a public body, are open meetings. So anyone can attend any meeting and kind of demystify this. I think logging is obviously a really controversial issue in our area. And I think it, unless someone attends the actual meeting, it could become a fertile ground for misinformation. So I encourage everyone here who's interested to attend one of our many meetings. They should be posted on the town website in accordance with the meeting. And Ms. Moderator, I move that with Sanford of Shelburne, be able to say something?
I mean, my sense is that people have probably heard plenty. And I don't know that there's anything that people have questions about anymore. I, I, I think, Mr. Gang, that part of what is going on is that there is, there's a very specific vote before us now. And there's also a giant context of sort of national debate and laws that we're being, that were being put in place in 2018 that are not what we're voting on here now. So I would like to call for us to vote.
Ms. Moderator?
Yes.
If I could speak for just two sentences?
I really think, I mean.
Ms. Moderator, I'm asking because I just want to correct the record.
I've got people here begging me to call the questions, so I feel like we need to vote.
Ms. Moderator, you said you wouldn't do this. I would like to just say that, just to correct the record. Ms. Moderator?
Well, then we're, then we're all going to talk more. You know, I mean, you're not the only one who gets to talk more now if we're.
I just want to say that, that in fact, in the law, I'm just saying, just for, just for clarity.
I want you to, I want you to. Ms. Sinclair, what I want you to do is describe only what is about the vote before the people of Buckland, which is to join the partnership, not about the enabling, not about the law and all the other things it created.
Ms. Moderator, to vote to join the partnership is to join a partnership that got created by law.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And so just to clarify, because people want to say those things. There's nothing, the law does not prohibit pellet burning, pellet promotion, none of that. It just doesn't. So just, we just need to understand that one little fact.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. But we are not voting on that law right now. We are voting on joining the partnership. Okay. I'm thinking everyone has had plenty of opportunity to think, read, and hear, so we're going to vote. All those in favor of Article 21, please raise your card. Okay, all those opposed? The article passes. It is not unanimous. And if I'm not mistaken, we might be done with this town meeting. Correct? I will entertain a motion to dissolve this town meeting.
Ms. Moderator, our move to dissolve the annual town meeting 2023.
All those in favor? Pass in your cards on your way out, please. And many thanks to people who are departing service this year, including Deana Wilmore and Barry Del Castillo for all your years of work.